Zoom ID number?
Go on there.
Sure.
Well, hello and welcome. Today is December the 13th. It is 6:30 PM, so I'm calling to order the Burnsville Planning Commission for tonight. Thank you for joining us. The commission will conduct in-person meetings and the city desires to provide options for members of the public to participate in the meeting while participating for their health. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person or join us via Zoom conferencing service. There is more instructions on that on our city website under the meeting section. With that, I will start the agenda. Our very first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Commissioner Timmerman makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Anderson?
I second.
Commissioner Anderson seconds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Not hearing none. Our last meeting was on November 22nd, 2021. Thank you so much. And your agenda or your packet would have had information on that meeting. Hopefully, you got a chance to read through that on the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting? Commissioner Awad?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Awad. Do I have a second? Commissioner Badcock?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? And motion carries. With that, I'm going to give a little bit more information. If you are joining by Zoom, it is also, you may be participating by going to zoom.us/join and typing in the meeting ID Once you get logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature. Tell the moderator that you would like to, an item to speak to. You may also call into the meeting at 651-372-8299. Again, you use the same meeting ID, and that is 989-4587-9774. For each public hearing, I will open up a time when callers may speak to that item and will give more instructions at that time. Your call will be muted until then, so please note that there might be a slight delay due to differences in technology, so we're asking that you have your computer or your television turned down when you're on the phone. With that, we will move into our number three item on our agenda, and that is the public hearing on application of La 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 LLC for interim use permit to allow one-year extension for building removal and soil compaction at 771 Lady Bird Lane to December 31st, 2022. Deb Gueros is a city planner, and she will be presenting. Ms. Gueros, the floor is yours.
Thank you, members of the planning commission and folks that are out in the audience and online. We do have an application this evening. It is a public hearing for an interim use permit. The subject site is located in the city's Minnesota River Quadrant. It's circled in yellow on the screen. There are two lots that are owned by the applicant. This is the one lot that's to the south, and the property is Zoned GIM, which is our Gateway Industrial Medium, and it's also in the North Gateway zoning district. It's also in the city's Drinking Water Supply Protection Overlay District. The existing building on the site was constructed back in 1963. This site has had a number of different interim use applications over the years for various things. There is also a settlement agreement that was a court-ordered agreement that dates back to 2017. And the most recent interim use permit is from 2017, and it's based on that negotiated settlement agreement, if you will. What was included within that IUP is there are different conditions for when various aspects of the operation are approved through. In this application, the building that is located on the subject site is to be removed by the end of this year based on that 2017 interim use permit. The applicant was advised of that back in July of this year, and their attorneys worked with the city attorney, and they are requesting a one-year extension for removal of the building. And that would be to allow the building to be removed next year by December 31st of 2022. In terms of the interim use permit that's on file, there are two conditions, 4A and 4C, that are going to be affected by this application. One is the removal of the building, and then the site is supposed to be, the soils are supposed to be all compacted for a new building site at the same point in time. This is just another picture of the building. The application was forwarded to Minnesota Department of Transportation. They have no issues with allowing the building to stay up another year. We did also send the application out for review by the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District. They, however, did not provide comments back to the city on the application. With that, the recommendation from staff is we are recommending the interim use permit to be approved. And again, the only change would be that the building and the site remediation for the soils would be extended for one year to next year. All of the rest of the stipulations in the court agreement and the previous interim use permits remain in full force and effect. With that, this is a public hearing, and I can stand for questions.
All right, Commissioner, do you have any questions for city staff? Commissioner Timmerman?
Ms. Gueros, I'm curious if you can provide a little more background on the settlement agreement and what, I guess, what brought that to a court action? And then I'll probably have some additional questions after that.
Sure. For a number of years, the property had been used for stockpiling dirt, and there's also a landscape company that operates out of the building. And dating back to, I believe, 2005, there was a conditional use permit that was issued to bring everything up to code, if you will. That conditional use permit was approved, but then it was never really enacted. So at that point in time, the city has been working with the property owner over a number of years through the courts, basically, to bring the site into compliance. There was a very tall pile of dirt that was stored on the site. And if, you know, as the planning commission is aware over the years, the city has worked with a number of property owners within this part of the Minnesota River Quadrant to do soils corrections. And so part of this remediation also allowed the applicant to do soil corrections as well and remediation. They came in again and did, I believe there were two other interim use permits, kind of getting at the same thing to resolve or remove the dirt, bring the site into compliance, and ended up with the, going to court. In 2017, that settlement agreement was included with your packet as far as how this would be settled. And the city's part was to approve an interim use permit subject to the conditions that are in that settlement agreement. And that has been done since that time. The applicant has been providing annual reports on the removal of the areas of that stockpile and kind of how they're bringing the site into compliance. And they have met all of those, except for this past year. And as provided in the packet, their attorney did provide a response to the city attorney and is requesting a year extension, basically, due to COVID and difficulty in finding people to come in to do the excavation work to complete that and then also to deconstruct the building.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that background. I think that's helpful to know that although there's been a significant delay and problem in remediating the issues that they have up until the pandemic been cooperating with their IUP.
Yes.
The question I have is, if we do not approve this and the city council does not approve this and it gets to December 31st of this year and they have not completed what was part of their last IUP, what would be the city's response in action then? And I'm asking this as foreshadowing for what may occur at the end of 2022 if this IUP is extended.
Yes. If it is not approved, then basically, the building would be noncompliant, and so would the interim use permit. So at that point in time, the city would start enforcement action again. And because it's part of a court settlement agreement, the city attorney most likely would be the prime individual involved in working with the court and the applicant's attorneys to resolve the matter.
Okay. Real good. Thanks.
Any other questions, commissioners? If the, when we're looking at how far along they've come as far as meeting the criteria of the IUP that was dated back to 2017, if I read correctly, how far along? What items have been met and what haven't been met as far as completion before December 31st this year?
Sure. They have, I don't have the actual site plan, but there was a plan that was in your packet. They have been removing their, I believe it's around 11,000 square feet of dirt or more a year. And they have been providing the soils tests from soils engineers indicating that they have been doing that. They started removals from the north part of the lot to the south. They have also constructed berms so that there is some screening when you're looking at the site from Lady Bird Lane and done some cleanup work. But basically, it's been the soils removal and then providing the documentation through the soils reports and engineering reports.
And this was all a result of lawsuit action that the site or the business brought against the city, correct? And this was some, a, what do you want to call it? Condition or?
There were a couple of factors there. The, there's a landscape business that operates at the site, and at the beginning, there was not an approval for that business. So the business was involved, and then also the stockpile of dirt and both of those. And it's kind of going back and forth, I don't know, chicken or egg, as to, you know, when the zoning violations and the applicant went back and forth. But basically, what resulted is that settlement agreement with the court.
Okay. And is the owner of the business here today?
That I do not know.
Okay.
Anyone from, we called and requested that they be here, but did not receive any feedback from them.
Be willing to speak to us tonight. Anyway, it is a public hearing, and I would, unless another commissioner has any other questions for city staff, not seeing any, I'm going to open up the public hearing at 6:42. And if you are participating online or on Zoom or through the television, you can call in using the phone number or you can contact the mediator about joining us. I'm not sure if we have anybody online or anything on Zoom. Anyone in the public that would like to speak to this can also stop up to the lectern. And I'm not seeing any. Now, I'm assuming nobody's on Zoom, so I am going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:43. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to the commissioners if there's any form of discussion you would like to discuss on this issue. Commissioner Awad?
I just want to, I mean, I understand that the delay has been to their inability to get people to help them dismantle the building and have trucking. And I just wanted to kind of affirm that it is very difficult in the world of construction to get anything done, especially these past couple of years. So I think their request is reasonable, and I don't see any reason to really deny it.
Commissioner Timmerman?
I agree with Commissioner Awad. That being said, they have been ordered by the courts to perform certain actions, and so I think that this is a one-time extension, in my mind. And by December 31st of next year, I believe all of these planning commissioners will still be sitting here. So I think it's very important that they do move forward on this. But if there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation as presented by staff.
Commissioner Awad?
I'll second the motion.
So a motion is on the table, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? With that, I am, I believe you have, do you have to extend the motion to state the address and everything on those lines?
Sure. So my motion is to move to the city council, staff's recommendation and the planning commission's recommendation to approve the IUP to extend the deadline to remove the existing building in compact soils at 771 Lady Bird Lane to December 31st, 2022, with the one condition as presented by staff.
Yeah, that's the condition that you're second, Commissioner Awad?
Yes.
Okay.
I still second the motion.
Good deal. Just want to make sure. I just want to point, I'm going to decline on this motion. I hope that it goes before the city council. They do have a chance to discuss it because I think it is something that needs discussion and hoping that they come up with a good solution and ensure that this does get completed by then because I feel like we're kicking the can down the road. With that, any other discussion? Seeing that, I'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, say nay. I say nay. And the motion carries. It looks like it is a four-to-one win. And it will move to our city council meeting next Tuesday, the 21st of December, 5:30 at this very chambers. With that, we'll move to number four on our agenda this evening, and that is a public hearing for the application of EFH Realty Advisors for preliminary and final plat of one lot industrial subdivision to be known as Kaufman Roofing Edition and conditional use permit for outdoor storage of roofing materials and to allow slats within a chain link fence at the proposed 12,800-square-foot office warehouse building located at 14330 Ewing Avenue South. And to present is Sarah Madden, our other city planner. Ms. Madden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, planning commissioners. So the item that I have before you this evening, as mentioned in the title, it's a preliminary and final plat and a conditional use permit for two different land use approvals. So the subject site is a vacant site in the southwest industrial area of the city. This is our I-3 industrial office zoning district. The land use for the site is guided as IND, which is, again, for that industrial or office. Surrounding the site is similar zoning on the Burnsville side. So as you can see, it's right on the line with the city boundary with Savage. So actually, catty-cornered to the site. And as you can see on the aerial photo, there is a single-family residential neighborhood. And then directly behind that neighborhood is continuation of this office industrial type of land use. So the subject site is a 1.46-acre lot. The proposal is for a new, just under 13,000-square-foot office warehouse building. The lot itself is part of the new preliminary and final plat, does conform to lot width and size requirements within the zoning district and subdivision ordinance. The site itself was surveyed as part of a tract within a registered land survey as part of the conditional use permit land use clearance and subsequent building permit that will come. The subdivision ordinance does require that a formal lot and block through a preliminary and final plat be completed. So that is part of the proposal this evening, but again, conforms to all subdivision ordinance requirements. Shown here is the kind of an existing condition survey of the vacant lot as well as a preliminary survey of the proposal. So the new office warehouse building, office warehouse is a permitted use in the underlying zoning district. The key part of the land use clearance this evening will be the outdoor storage component as well as as part of their screening for the outdoor storage. The applicant is proposing an eight-foot slats within a chain link fence fencing type, which is allowed by conditional use permit in the zoning code as well. So again, so there's two CUPs, conditional use permits as part of the proposal this evening. The site will be secured with an eight-foot fence along the perimeter and beginning at the rear of the building with gate entrances on both sides. They are proposing an eight-foot fence. I do have a slide later on and within your background packet that shows an example of what slats within chain link fencing looks like. There are 25 parking stalls proposed. There are 29, which would be required by the zoning ordinance. The applicant team is utilizing the proof-of-parking concept, which is within our parking ordinance. You may be familiar with that from some previous proposals. But just as a refresher, what they are using this tool is to show that they feel that the parking that they are providing on the site is sufficient enough for the use. But if they needed to in the case of maybe something changes with the business use or with their demand, that they have the ability to meet the 29 required with four additional spaces. So those are two prospective spaces in their rear loading and outdoor storage area to the north and to the south of their rear storage area. So staff does agree with the applicant that with the 25 spaces that are proposed, that we don't foresee any issues with that as their parking count. So shown here are the exterior elevations and the floor plan for the building. So the building is proposed to be 22 feet in height, primarily a decorative precast material for their exterior materials. They are showing a kind of more enhanced entrance area for their front entrance due to the parapet that'll be about 24 feet in height here, but surrounded by differing materials, differing kind of metal canopy roofing on the building, as well as you can see in the rear area behind the gated fence for their outdoor storage of their roofing materials. There are overhead doors on the building. Within the building itself, office would be in the front on the east side of the building facing the front parking area and Ewing Avenue with more of a warehouse space in the rear of the building, making up most of the site. Shown here is the grading wall for the site. So there is a retaining wall that is proposed as part of their plan. So it runs, it cuts the corner at the northwest corner of the site and runs outside of the easement but in the rear yard of the property. So that runs varying heights from two to three and a half feet, so a smaller scale retaining wall. And I'll actually skip ahead and come back. And you can see on their landscaping plan that that part of the areas where a lot of their shrub plantings are proposed as part of their landscaping plan. As I mentioned earlier, they are kind of catty-cornered to a residential, the rear of a residential neighborhood. So there are more planting materials in that southwest corner than in some of the other areas of the site to account for that. The proposal is compliant with the majority of the landscaping requirements. So they're showing a 30.5% overall green space meeting the zoning ordinance requirements, 6% of the parking lot to be landscaped, exceeding that requirement. Based on the measurements we were able to take from this plan, we are reading a 49% building perimeter landscaping requirement as opposed to the 50% that would be required by the zoning code. We've included a condition that that either be revised for the one linear foot or there is a provision within our landscaping ordinance that allows industrial buildings to have that reduction in building perimeter landscaping if perhaps their entrance had non-permanent landscaping installations. So whether that's a large planting, that was part of the landscaping provision changes that we did at the end of last year. You may remember, if you were on the planning commission at that time, that that was one of our work plan items. We will, so we've included that as a condition, and that's something that would be reviewed as part of the building permit proposal. And staff would just verify the measurements again as part of that proposal. And they would either comply with one, comply with those landscaping ordinance in one way or another. So that is a condition on the approval this evening. Shown here is the utility plan. I do want to point out that there is an underground infiltration system for water quality and rate control to the south of the building. So that would be underneath their dry aisle as part of their proposal. So shown here, just a highlighted area showing there about 8,000-square-foot of outdoor storage area in the rear of the building. And the applicant has provided a narrative letter briefly describing some of the roofing materials and types that would be stored in that area. And to the right on the slide shows an example of a privacy slat within a chain link fence and how that screening might look with the CUP approval. So with that, you know, staff is recommending approval of the application. We feel that with the conditions provided that would have minimal impact on the surrounding areas. Office warehouses are permitted use, and there are many of these types of businesses that have these outdoor storage components in this industrial area within the city of Burnsville. So there are seven conditions included with this recommendation. So as mentioned, the first condition relates to the revised landscaping plan mentioned, the first condition relates to the revised landscaping plan in order to meet that discrepancy in the building perimeter landscape measurements. Second condition can be standard as far as what we see for building or ground-mounted or building-mounted, any mechanical equipment that it's screened pursuant to the zoning ordinance, no exterior signage to be installed prior to the issuance of a sign permit, that a site, a photometric plan be provided at the building permit application. And then three, referencing the engineering side of the review, that there may be some outstanding memo comments to be addressed as part of the building permit approval, stormwater management agreement executed and recorded, and that there are development fees to be paid related to the plating of the property. So with that, I can stand for questions. This is a public hearing this evening, and there is a member from the applicant team available in the audience to answer questions if needed.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. Commission, any questions for city staff? Commissioner Wallace?
Yeah, just one question for staff. With this being an industrial property, even though, you know, the residential piece is with Savage, but we want to be good neighbors with them as well. Does the industrial property follow the same noise ordinance laws of not having any noise before 7:00 a.m.?
Yes, that's a great question. So any, anything that would apply to a Burnsville property would still apply in this case. And some of those noise standards go beyond the Burnsville City Code as a whole and further into state statute as far as construction noise and decibel level. With the construction of the building, they haven't requested any beyond construction hour work, to be able to do work overnight, if that's maybe what you're getting at.
No, the bigger question is, is like dealing with forklifts in the middle of the night, moving the roofing materials. I also saw that the trash area is actually backing up right to the residential instead of being on the opposite side. And so we want to ensure that the trash companies aren't coming in before 7:00 a.m. and disturbing the residential area as well.
Right. That's a great point, and I do actually want to point out that, so on the screening plan and the landscaping plan, it does show that the trash enclosure is exterior, and I apologize that I didn't point that out. They provided a memo in their second set of plans for the review that trash would be located in the interior of the building. So these two plans do still show it on the exterior, but it will be on the other, every other set of the civil plans, it's shown on the interior. So I apologize that that, I didn't note that. With where it was proposed, the, any noise or nuisance-related provisions within the city code would still apply, even with it being a neighboring city, because it would apply to even your neighboring industrial properties as well, that, in the way that the city code is organized.
No, thank you for that.
Yes.
Commissioner Timmerman?
So we typically notify homeowners within a certain, what is it, 500 feet of a property that's...
So we, by statute, we notify 350 feet of the perimeter of the site, and we did send out notices to the neighboring city as well.
How kind of you. Will you show us on the picture where the chain link fence is going to be?
Yes. So they have it labeled here in that it's kind of running along with that retaining wall. This one may not be the best. Well, it might have been. So labeled here, I'm sorry that isn't as clear on a slide on a PowerPoint, but the eight-foot chain link fence with privacy slats is labeled with this arrow here. I'm not sure if you can see where I'm pointing. So it runs similar, it surrounds the outdoor storage area to be screened pursuant to the city code requirements, and so it does follow the perimeter.
So will there be anything with their plantings to the west side of the chain link fence, or is the chain link fence going to basically be the visual edge of their
So the, they will be, let me see the label. They'll be within the chain link fence and not on the exterior, is what it looks like here. And I maybe can ask the applicant to come up and answer some of those more specific questions, not exactly where they'll be laid, because they do have some wiggle room in order to move things around as they actually get digging.
I was just going to suggest that. So if the applicant is available, if he would, would like to step up to the lecture. And usually customary is if you can say your name and address for the record, please.
Excuse me. Mike Whalen with EFH Realty Advisors. And the landscape plan and the fence, typically the fence is going to go right on the backside of that retaining wall. And if you notice on your, on this site, we have a 10-foot power line easement. So we also have to take into account that along that easement with, I think it's Minnesota Valley, we cannot plant a lot of big trees in there because of that power line easement, so we got to keep it to little growies. So in effect, whatever would go in there, the easement is always going to be in place. So we'll just work with staff on the landscaping side, and we know that it's residential on that other side also, and make sure that we can provide enough screening as possible, so.
And can you also speak to Commissioner Wallace's questions concerning operations between the hours of nine and seven?
I will let the tenant, Kaufman Roofing, speak to that.
Okay.
He can tell us, or tell you his hours of operation and how they operate their business, so.
Well, before Mr. Whalen sits down, does any of the commissioner have a questions for Mr. Whalen? Seeing none. If Mr. Kaufman wouldn't mind stepping up. If you could please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yep. My name is Bob Kaufman, Kaufman Roofing. And the address you said as well?
Yes, sir.
The one that we're building in?
The home address.
Oh.
Or business.
Oh, business, yeah.
15859 Cobblestone Lake Parkway, Apple Valley.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can you address Commissioner Wallace's question concerning operation hours, whether forklifts would be moving during the evening hours up till 7:00 a.m.?
Absolutely. Seven, that's when we open, 7:00 a.m., and we close at 3:30.
Okay.
And we've no overtime or weekends, so that's been pretty much through the whole life of the business, so.
A neighborhood-friendly business, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Oh, good.
Definitely.
Great. Any other questions for Mr. Kaufman? No, seen none. Thank you for stepping up. With that, I would like to open up the public hearing. It is a public hearing. It is 7:03. And again, if you're watching at home, this is a hybrid meeting. We can, you can either tell the moderator you're available or would like to comment on tonight's issue, or you can join us or phone call in using the phone number 651-372-8299. Again, the meeting ID is 989-4587-9774. And I'll give a minute. Anyone in the audience here may step up to the podium if feel the urge to do so, and doesn't look like anybody's feeling the urge. And with that, I don't believe anybody's on Zoom, so I am going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:04. And I'm going to hand it over to you commissioners. Any comments, questions, concerns, discussions? Commissioner Timmerman?
You know I'm going to have to come.
Of course you are. I was just waiting for it.
Mr. Whalen, good job finding a vacant green space in the city of Burnsville. That's all I wanted to say.
Right. Commissioner Wad?
Yeah, I just wanted to, yeah, commend you on the, what looks to be a nice project, and I appreciate how they, with their landscaping, were sensitive to the neighbors and, and to the surroundings. Yeah, but, and also thank you for bringing your business to Burnsville.
I would like to second that. That was well stated, Commissioner Wad. Any other comments, questions, concerns, commissioners? I'd be interested in a motion if, Commissioner Wad?
I, I will make the motion. So I move that we recommend to the city council approval of the preliminary and final plat of Kaufman Roofing Edition and conditional use permit for outdoor storage and slats within chain link fencing, subject to the seven conditions that were listed.
With that, we have a motion by Commissioner Wad. Any seconds. Commissioner Anderson?
I'd like to second that.
Why, thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Put that to a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Hearing none. That is a unanimous consent. It will move to the city council on our next meeting on Tuesday, December 21st, at 5:30 p.m. in these very council chambers. And we're going to move on to the next media, point in our agenda, and that's number five. It's a public hearing for IAG Commercial for Plan Unit Development Amendment to allow auto repair use at 12450 River Ridge Lane. Ms. Madden's still up there. I'm assuming she's speaking to this one?
Yes.
Ms. Madden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. All right. So, so this item that we'll be checking into next, which is also a public hearing, is related to a PUD amendment that is use-specific. So there are no interior or exterior changes proposed as part of this application. This application is actually a really great example of how the plan unit development tool can be really flexible when you're creating a brand-new plan unit development. But when it comes time for somebody new to move into that location, that an amendment may be needed because of how specific things were phrased in the original plan unit development. So this, this is an existing building, was formerly the Progressive Insurance Claims Center. So it was both a call center and then also an inspection center for damaged vehicles for those claims. So it's a just-under-six-acre property. The building is approximately 23,000 square feet, currently zoned mix for mixed use with that plan unit development as the governing document. Just recently rezoned to mix as part of the city council-initiated greater mixed-use development standards within the city of Burnsville that went through this past October, but that began in January of 2020. So as I mentioned, the original plan unit development was for the Progressive Insurance Building. So this was built and approved in 2005, I believe. So designed as that claims center. In the staff report for that original plan unit development, the applicant, Progressive, had described kind of in detail how they were going to be using the site, and it indicated that their claims center would not be a location where repair would take place. So outdoor storage of vehicles was permitted as part of the plan unit development approval, because there would be vehicles that were dropped off, unoperable, awaiting after their tow for that insurance claim review. So they do have an outdoor storage area that would remain in full force and effect as part of the plan unit development, but that the auto repair would not take place on the interior of the building, and that it was just for examining the cars. So the way that the building was constructed is it does have a garage with about eight bays in it, where they had the lifts, they had everything they would need in order to examine a damaged vehicle, but not, not approved for the use of repair. So the, that original plan development is still in effect, and the proposal this evening is to amend it to allow auto repairs of use, as there is a business that has, an existing business in Burnsville that has moved into the location and saw that it had a garage with bays and lift, and recognized that the building construction style was for an auto-oriented use. So benefits to the plan unit development amendment is that the proposal provides an upgraded space for an existing Burnsville business, and that the use is compatible with the original building design. PUD deviations within it would be to allow the auto repair use within the plan unit development. One other factor as part of this is that it, because of the rezoning to mixed use, auto repair was a listed permitted use in the previous zoning district of B3. And in mixed use, auto repair is not listed, making it prohibited. Of course, the planned unit development does overlay over the underlying zoning, and it has precedence as far as zoning, so we will just be including it as a deviation within this plan unit development. Some just considerations. So the building inspections department was able to conduct a site visit and coordinate with the applicant to determine any permitting needs. So that's something that they're still working through outside of the zoning and land use clearance for the, just the official auto repair use. So that's something that's going on behind the scenes with our inspection staff in order to coordinate with them. So this approval this evening is strictly related to the plan unit development amendment that's needed. One thing that changed in 2016 and 2017 within the way that the city of Burnsville approves or reviews plan unit developments is that we include a statement in the plan unit development ordinance and in the PUD governing document that underlying uses would be permitted under the plan unit development. So this statement is going to be included with the site moving forward. So anything that is listed within mixed use could still be permitted within this PUD without a further amendment of the PUD. So staff is recommending approval of the application, subject to conditions that the PUD, previous PUD remains in effect, and again, that those uses that are listed in the underlying zoning district are allowed in addition to the specific use of auto repair, which is approved as this plan unit development amendment. So this is a public hearing. I can stand for questions, and I do believe that there are members in the audience from the applicant team that could speak to this if necessary.
Thanks, Ms. Madden. Commission, Commissioner Wad?
Can you go back to the floor plan?
Yes.
And can you point out, I, I see like office space. Where are the, where's the automobile service?
Here.
Okay. That section of the building.
There's these bays.
Okay, yep.
And so I will, I mentioned it in my background report, but not in my presentation, that there is other leasable space in the building that is vacant at the moment that they're working through to, to make leasable. So that is part of the reason why the underlying uses. We want to be sure that that is included in the plan unit development.
Progressive is not there. They don't use the building for its original purpose anymore.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for city staff, commissioners? Commissioner Timmerman?
Looking at the parking as it stands right now, will there be any issues? I, the presentation didn't really talk too much about that, but if they start filling in some of these other leased spaces, is that something we look at and think about now, or is that something that they come back to us later for?
So at the moment, there are 149 stalls approximately on site, and...
Okay, never mind then.
What's higher for this particular use is only 48 stalls. Now, there, like I mentioned, about half the building, or I'm not quite sure the exact percentage there, is still ready to be leased, and we would review that for every building permit that comes in, the parking. If there became a situation where they needed further amendment to the plan unit development, it would be brought forward. But for parking in particular with our ordinance, we do have some flexibility from a staff side, whether that's through proof of parking or parking studies that show that the site is viable as is with the parking for any other tenants that may enter the building. That's something that staff would review at time of building permit and bring forward if it's, if staff and the applicant can't come into agreement on the parking plan.
Okay. And then Chair, I have two more questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner Timmerman.
So you said that any mixed-use purposes will carry forward with this property going forward, but will this PUD also carry forward with the property going forward?
Yes.
So the one thing that I want to point out here is that this is a very unique space, and there will potentially be a bridge or an underpass at some point going right over 13 or under 13 that, that will likely exit or need some sort of rampage right in this area. And that could create a very attractive type of business, and I'm not saying that, you know, a car repair shop can't be attractive if they, if they do it right. But I just want to make sure that we in the city council have the foresight to say, okay, this is something that we, we want permanently in this space. And so although I will vote to approve this tonight, because I think the plan is fine, I want the city council to at least think about an interim use permit rather than a planned use development, so it's not something that carries forward with the property in perpetuity. So that's commentary, but I also told you how I plan to vote, so.
A little foreshadowing. Any other comments or questions by commissioner for city staff? And since, excuse me, since the applicant did decide to show up, if they want to speak to us, they certainly can before I open up the public hearing. Anybody interested? No hard rush to the podium at all? I'm not seeing that. Okay, that's fine. That's fine. With that, I will open up the public hearing. It is 7:15. Again, if you're joining us online via Zoom or you're watching on cable access, you can call in, or you can speak to the moderator on Zoom. Let us know if you want to speak to this issue or this public hearing. Again, the phone number is 651-372-8299, and the meeting ID is 989-4587-9774. Of course, anyone in the room can come to the podium and speak to the issue if they do desire. Again, no mad rush, and that's okay. And with that, not hearing anybody on Zoom, I am going to close the public hearing at 7:16 on the numbers. And I am going to hand it over to commissioners for any other discussions, questions, concerns. Commissioner Anderson?
To me, this seems pretty cut and dry. It's a kind of a win-win situation. It helps out a, a current Burnsville business. It fits the exact purpose of the building itself. So I mean, if nobody has an, an issue, I would actually like to make a motion.
I believe that that's an order.
All right. I would like to, I would like us to recommend to the city council approval of the plan unit development amendment, subject to the following two conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Anderson made a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bradock?
I second the motion.
Commissioner Bradock seconds the motion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Hearing none unanimously approves. It will be on the consent agenda for city council meeting December the 21st, which is Tuesday, 5:30 here at City Hall. And we'll move on to our sixth item on the agenda, and that's a public hearing for Oxford Hill Development Group III LLC for a planned unit development amendment for more than one principal building on a lot to construct a 2,550-square-foot quick-service restaurant with a drive-thru and a 1,396-square-foot coffee shop with a drive-thru located at 14200 Nicollet Avenue. It is formerly known as the Roasted Pear Site, and right in front of Cobblestone Strip Mall, I believe. And it looks like Ms. Madden, you'll be speaking on this one as well. Go ahead, Ms. Madden.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So as mentioned, this is a plan unit development of an existing site in Burnsville that is proposed to be redeveloped and to two buildings. So there are a number of deviations included in this proposal moving forward. I, please feel free to stop me or reach your hand or use the dais or buttons to check in as we go through this, because this is going to be a long batch of material. So the subject site is zoned B3 general business and has a planned unit development. It is part of the Cobblestone Court or Federal Land Co. Platte. Plan unit development includes the Cobblestone Court Shopping Center to the north, which we've seen some proposals on within the last year or so related to redevelopment in that area as well. It is guided BUS in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, so that's Business Retail Office. So the proposal, or the site here is originally a lot that was set aside for a restaurant as part of that original shopping center plan unit development. So this was platted in 1978, and the building itself was built in 1980 as a grand round restaurant or ground-round restaurant. It was home to the Roasted Pear for many years here in Burnsville, which has been vacant since about mid-2020. So the site itself is accessible from the shared shopping center access. So its entrance for the former restaurant and for the new proposal will be off of that access drive, which they do have easement for ingress and egress from the property. So there is a 20-foot drainage and utility easement on the south property line, wider than our standard-platted easements. Additionally, just in case it wasn't clear from the title, so the building is proposed to be demolished as part of this new development, and the majority of the trees on the site as well will be removed to accommodate the new site plan and proposal. So benefits within this plan unit development, so the proposal that you'll be seeing this evening, it does exceed parking lot green space as required by the zoning ordinance, as well as just minimum site landscaping. as well as just minimum site landscaping requirements for overall green space as well as plantings. The landscaping installation does include numerous perennial beds where only turf grass currently exists on the Roasted Pear Site, so that would be an upgrade to the visible landscaped area from the street. The site provides a pedestrian connection to city trail sidewalk, which is adjacent to Nicolet Avenue. There's an aesthetic amenity which is a wooden pergola that the applicant is proposing that will be provided at that pedestrian connection with additional landscaping and some seating. The proposed vehicle stacking for the two drive-throughs for the two different buildings exceed ordinance standard, well and above the ordinance' minimum requirements for stacking spaces for a drive-through lane, and some bicycle parking will be provided onsite as well. For the deviations to be included as part of this proposal, I'll list them here, but as I go through the individual site plans, I'll try to point them out. So again, feel free to raise your hand. So the main land use clearance as part of the planned unit development amendment is that more than one principal building on one lot is a CUP anywhere in the city and a zoning, just only any zoning district. So that would be that there are two new buildings proposed as part of this, both principal buildings on this one lot. The applicant is requesting a reduction to the minimum parking standards within the zoning ordinance of 35 spaces versus the 70 spaces that would be required. They are requesting to include five compact parking spaces as part of the proposal. The pedestrian sidewalk that abuts parking is required to be six feet in the city code, there is one section where they're proposing a five-feet sidewalk instead of six feet that is adjacent to the compact space parking, so staff is supportive of that request. A request for reduced width for drive-up window lanes from 14 feet, so that varies in some spaces, I'll point that out on the site plan, many spaces it is 12 feet, but in some spaces it is as wide as 20 feet, so that it varies as they make their way through a drive-through around corners. To allow a reduced front yard principal structure setback of 24 feet 6 inches versus the 30-foot requirement for the Starbucks building, to allow a reduced principal structure setback of 21 feet and 6 inches versus the 30 feet for the Taco John's building, there is a reduced accessory structure setback for the pergola, which is part of their amenity that they're providing to the site. There is a request for reduced parking setback in the front yard for the drive aisle for the Taco John's, the fast food restaurant. Request for reduced parking lot island size, so these vary in size as well, but some are as low as 50% from the ordinance requirement, so the ordinance does require 180 square feet and some are as small as 90 square feet. Overall, the parking lot landscaping or landscaping within the parking area as a whole does exceed ordinance requirements, and it does, the size kind of accommodates the ability for them to provide more parking on the site, so staff is supportive of that. To allow building perimeter landscaping to be reduced on both buildings, so for the coffee shop, 34%, for the fast food building, 26%. There are some provisions in the zoning ordinance which allow a reduction when a patio is included, so that's talked about both in my report, and I'll mention it when we get to the landscaping plan. A reduced setback for the new proposed pylon sign, a additional sign. So staff mentions in our report, so that signage, when there's more than one freestanding sign on a property, there are height and size limitations, so the deviation request is to exceed that height limitation and the distance limitation from the other sign, as well as a reduced setback for that second sign as well from the front street, parking setback, or sign setback, sorry. So as we kind of move into some of the plans here, so shown here is the proposed overall site plan for the new development. So you can see on the kind of northern part of the site, that is the proposed restaurant, so that's 2,550 square feet. The site does share a parking area, and they would, vehicles would enter the site and drive-through areas for the restaurant. In this location, it does have two entrances to their drive aisle showing that 12-foot in this location, and then the drive aisles do merge to make their way around the building as the vehicles move through the queuing lane. At the southern end of the site is the proposed coffee shop at 1,396 square feet. Again, this is an extended queue lane, so they're showing the ability for 15 vehicles to fit in this queue lane for the coffee shop and 12 for the fast food restaurant.
Commissioner Watt, do you have a question?
Yes.
Can you describe what, there's a couple of front yard setback variances?
Yes.
Can you describe what is the front yard?
I can.
Okay.
So the front yard is any property line which faces a public street, so that would be the Nicolet Avenue front, and then the small at the bottom-
So that, oh, that's the-
Is adjacent to right of way, so that is also front.
Okay, so the, like, the coffee shop has two front, front yards?
That's correct.
And the restaurant has just one front yard?
Kind of has a, a front curve.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, and so the, the access street is not a front street for setbacks.
Thanks.
And then the setback request, so this is the setback line that you can see cutting the corner of the building here.
Yep.
So to say corner of the building, which is within the setback request, as well as for the proposed coffee shop. You can sort of see faintly the dash line, it may be more clear in your background report. It's corners of the building for the setback request.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
Yes, and then the drive aisle setback request is a portion, so that's this line right here that comes from the north and cuts, clips the edge of the drive aisle lane. And then the pergola is within a setback, that's what the square is that goes over the pedestrian connection that they're providing to the city sidewalk. So that is also within the setback.
Okay.
Yes. So, and I'll point this out when we get to the utility plan later, but this dash line here in the middle of the parking area is the underground stormwater infrastructure that they are supplying. This here is the location of the shared trash enclosure. It does have space for trash recycling, organics, and grease, so it's quite an extensive trash enclosure. And then for the signage that will, is proposed on the site, so the new pylon is proposed adjacent to their kind of pedestrian access that they are providing, and then the smaller sign that also has a setback request is located here. So the sign ordinance does require that when there's more than one sign on a property, that they're 300 feet in distance apart. The signs are proposed in these locations due to the existence of this sign in the neighboring shopping, shopping center, and even if the sign were located more closely to the south, there was limited space for the sign to be in to meet that distance requirement from the other sign, based on proximity to the, what is about to be a new pylon sign or may already be a new pylon sign for the shopping center, and the easement to the south, the utility easement. So that is the reasoning for the location of the two new freestanding signs. So shown here is the grading plan for the site, and you can see the stormwater infrastructure a little bit more clearly. What I do want to point out are two retaining walls for the proposal, so one on the north side adjacent to the entrance and the drive aisle that is shared for the site, and then one on the west edge of the site, kind of curving down and around the drive aisle or the drive-through for queuing. So the applicant has indicated that there will be safety measures in place on the retaining wall. I know that question has come up from the commission before. So shown here is the utility plan, so the site will be connected, of course, to city utilities, including our water, meat, sanitary, and then the new storm sewer infrastructure, which they would be installing as an underground filtration system for water quality and rate Shown here is the landscaping plan, so quite a lot of movement on this plan. So 10 of the 11 existing trees are to be removed as part of the demo of the site, so there will be a tree removal permit that is required. There is a tree preservation plan in your background packet, but not in this presentation, which describes some of the valuation of the trees to be removed, and some of those calculations will be provided as part of a tree removal permit, which staff will use kind of calculating as we review the landscaping plan as well for reforestation of those trees that are being removed. The site itself does exceed the overall green space per the property and the parking lot green space, as I mentioned in the deviation section, so there are reduced island sizes for the parking lot islands that allows the applicant to include as many surface parking stalls as they are able to, while also still exceeding the minimum requirement for landscaping within the parking area. So both of the buildings are requesting a deviation for a reduced building perimeter landscaping. A few years ago, as part of a patio ordinance provisions change, the city started to, to encourage restaurants to be able to install patios, there was a provision added to where a reduction in building perimeter landscaping would be allowed administratively for the installation of a patio area. So this is included as a deviation because it's being reviewed as part of the grander and overall planned unit development amendment, but there is an administrative tool in place where staff could, as part of a standard building permit, reduce building perimeter landscaping for a patio. So you can see on this landscaping plan that there are, on the Taco John's fast food restaurant, there are a number of plantings on the east side and south side, but that the sidewalk on the front, there's no landscaping in that area, and then this is the patio area just to the north of the building where they're showing the availability of some outdoor seating components for the building. So the same can be true for the, the coffee shop location, which is requesting a similar deviation in that there's plantings in a few areas along the side, but that the front area does have included a patio area also for outdoor seating. So this coffee shop is proposed to be a drive-through only, so there will be no indoor seating at this location. So be outdoor seating, drive-through, mobile order pickup, things like that. There will be indoor dining at the, available at the fast food, the Taco John's restaurant.
Can I interrupt with a question there?
Yes.
Because when I was looking at the floor plans for the coffee shop, it looked like there was a lap, a lobby area?
Yes, so there is a lobby area that they are proposing, so part of that is related to mobile order pickup.
Okay.
So that would be the tool that you could use for running in and grabbing a drink, things like that. I can maybe have the applicant address some of the specifics on that later.
Right.
But the way that it has been presented is that no indoor seating available, although there will be a restroom on the interior of the building as well as that main lobby area. I also want to note, which may be more visible again on your, in your background packet than on the slides, but that there are a number of areas that are decorated on the landscaping plan with various textured hashing that shows the location of the perennial beds. So they're surrounding the proposed pergola and on the exterior of the site or the perimeter of the site in this location as well, next to their shared access aisle for the shopping center, there are a number of perennial beds proposed as part of an aesthetic benefit to the landscaping provided in the planned unit development. And then again, the pedestrian connection that they're proposing to connect into the city sidewalk with that kind of enhanced entrance for anyone who may wish to walk to the site. So shown here are the proposed kind of elevations of the buildings. So I didn't include in the presentation the full breakdown of materials, but I can answer questions about that based on the information that's in your packet. Briefly, just to go into some details, so both buildings do meet the exterior material standards of the zoning ordinance. So the proposed Taco John's is their new, I guess their new model and their marketing style for some, you know, contrasting colors, a combination of horizontal, vertical features, which is something that is a kind of an architectural inclusion that we encourage within the zoning ordinance. Both buildings are utilizing a kind of enhanced canopy area for their, like, signage bands and where those are located, so you can see the metal canopies on both. The proposed coffee shop, the Starbucks, primarily some decorative brick included, EPIS, some decorative metal, so the wood look, and that's part of the materials that are included as part of their design. But again, I can get into more details on that, and then the architectural review tool for each building was also included as part of your background packet. Floor plans for both buildings, so on the left side of your screen, you'll see the proposed for the interior of the coffee shop, so they are showing a lobby area and then the, the staff kitchen, kitchen office, and service area in the rear connecting to that drive-through, as well as a restroom facility that is available for patrons, and then the part cupboard and other areas with some bike parking out front, and so this is all paved patio area up to the, to the parking. On the Taco John's floor plan, you can see that, so this would be the north end where they're showing the, that they have some availability for some outdoor seating, but there will be a dine-in available as a service for their restaurant as well as kitchen in the back. So signage on the property, for the wall signs, we've included our standard condition that no signage is installed without a separate sign permit issued by the city. For the freestanding signs, that would also be true, there are also building permits required for signs over seven feet in height, which both of these would trigger that building permit request for a separate building permit. I mentioned the setbacks when we were looking at the overall site plan, I'll mention that again, that the proposed, the proposed pylon is adjacent to the new sidewalk connection, and then there's an additional freestanding sign proposed next to the Taco John's. So showing here are the drawings of the kind of bare bones of what the sign for proposed height, so one is proposed at nine foot 6 inches in height, and then the pylon proposed at 24 feet, which is the maximum for that area per the zoning code for fronting Nicolet Avenue. So that is similar to what was approved for the shopping center for their new sign to the north, same height that was approved. So shown here are just some elevations in a site plan for that trash enclosure that I had mentioned that's shared in the middle of their parking area. I had mentioned they have room for trash, recycling, grease, and then organic bins, so it's a well-sized trash enclosure for the two uses with some room to grow as technology and needs change. So the building itself for the enclosure does have a roof, a gate, and fully screened walls from, on the exterior with some compatible materials similar to what is proposed on the Starbucks elevation that we saw earlier in the presentation. To get deeper into the parking, which is a big part of the zoning request as part of this proposal, so the zoning ordinance would require 70 parking spaces, so that would include 39 spaces for the Taco John's restaurant, 21 spaces for the Starbucks restaurant, and then 10 spaces for the employee work shift, which was provided as part of the zoning code. So it is a request of 50% of the zoning ordinance requirement. Five of the spaces that are proposed are compact spaces of 8 by 16 as opposed to the 9 by 18 required by the zoning ordinance, so they are located to the north of the site. And as I had mentioned, the pedestrian path that abuts them is supposed to be five feet as opposed to the six feet, which is typically required for pole-in parking. With it being compact car spaces and the intent of that wider berth for a sidewalk, staff is supportive of that request, we find that reasonable. Because of the nature of the two buildings, so the applicant has provided in your background report some narrative information on parking versus drive-through needs over the last couple of years for fast food restaurants as a whole. So we think we've all seen kind of a more reliance on a drive-through service or pickup service as part of dine-in, or rather than a dine-in service over the last two years, just due to the nature of the pandemic. However, the applicant has also provided some information showing that prior to the COVID-19 pandemic in 2019, the Taco John's still had about 65% of their service was through the drive-through. So even taking into, that into account, the, the request for the parking reduction comes from a place of acknowledging that drive-through service is primary, primarily the service for this particular fast food restaurant. For the drive-through only coffee shop, drive-through service will primarily be the, the means in which customers arrive to the site for that business, as well as the inclusion of some spaces for that mobile order pickup or those that do want to sit onsite. Extended queuing lanes have been provided for both restaurants, so the ordinance requires six stacking spaces in a drive-through for the fast food restaurant and other drive-through uses. And as I mentioned earlier, so 12 are indicated on the- And as I mentioned earlier, so 12 are indicated on the Taco John's, so that does include, because they are split, and then 15 for the coffee shop. So that is part of the request. And then I'll mention it a little bit later, but there is a condition of approval on the application that a traffic study is completed. That, some of that work has already been completed and they've been in coordination with our engineering department, but that condition is still included as part of the review this evening. The traffic study is primarily related to the city infrastructure improvements that may need to be made as a result of trips to the site. It is not part of the, necessarily the parking review. What is part of the parking review is the, there are differing peaks between the uses in that one is a coffee shop with a primarily an AM to lunchtime peak, whereas one is a fast food restaurant with primarily a lunchtime to heavier dinner peak. So they do have differing hours of their peak where they would be utilizing the parking. Staff also looked into previous approvals for parking reductions. So some of you may be familiar with the drive-through only Caribou Coffee that is on County Road 42. That was approved administratively through a building permit. And the applicant at that time had proposed proof of parking, so they installed probably 60% of what the ordinance would require and then showed down a proof of parking plan that they could install if needed additional surface parking spaces. From kind of feedback that we've heard from the community offhand over the last couple of years since, or the last year or so since that opened, the primary concern has been for the stacking in the drive-through lane at that Caribou Coffee and not in the parking area. So it is that there's not enough room in that parking, which has the minimum of six spaces for people to circulate through the site. So with that kind of knowledge and the peak hours that we know of, staff is supportive of their deviation request for parking. Yes, Commissioner Anderson?
Just so I can visualize, is this coffee shop going to be similar in size to that one on 42?
It is slightly larger than the one on 42, or I would say more than double.
Oh, okay.
Yes. The one on 42 does not have restroom facilities for customers.
Okay.
Or a lobby. Yep, so moving on though, the drive-through, they provided some numbers on their uses and how that has just increased over time, particularly with the COVID-19 pandemic, that for both restaurants, drive-through was the primary use. And we would definitely see that with a drive-through only coffee shop as opposed to a traditional coffee shop with a, with a drive-through as an aside. So staff considerations, I mentioned that staff is recommending a traffic study. So that is triggered by the zoning ordinance based on the number of daily trips that were added to the site in concordance with where this site is located and its proximity to County Road 42. So there is information that has been provided, but this condition is still included as part of the proposal. So an outdoor patio, bicycle rack, pedestrian connections, and extended drive-through lanes are included with the proposal, providing some of that multimodal connection, but also helping to provide that site-specific analysis of why this 50% parking reduction can be, that staff can be supportive of a reduction of that size. And then with the conditions included, so we are supportive of the application as a whole. Staff is recommending approval subject to seven conditions. So we are noting, of course, that the conditions of previously approved planning developments do remain in effect. A tree removal permit is required. All rooftop and ground-mounted mechanical equipment to be screened from view. You can see on the landscaping plan that the ground mounted does include adjacent landscaping, I will point that out. That no exterior signage be installed without a sign permit as issued by the city. Exterior lighting to be downcast, shielded on all faces. That any outstanding comments from the city engineering memos be addressed adequately for the city engineer prior to our permitting process, and that that traffic study be conducted. And should it show a need for public improvements for mitigation of the trips to the site, that that agreement move forward for those improvements. So with that, I can stand for questions. This is a public hearing this evening, and several members of the applicant team are available to answer questions this evening as well.
Well, thank you, Ms. Madden. That was a lot of words for you tonight. You've done a wonderful job thus far. Thank you. Well, commissioners, do we have questions? Commissioner Wallace has got his hand up. Commissioner Wallace?
Yes, staff, we have basically two questions and/or concerns. Can we bring up one of the site maps? Anyone will do. Thank you. In regards to this with the coffee shop, yes, they have a lane of 15 vehicles. However, upon exit from that drive-through, if there, I kind of foresee a bottleneck if Taco John's could potentially be too deep waiting to get through their drive-through, will there be signage for them to basically merge left to exit the parking lot?
Yeah, that's a great question. So there is a kind of significant directional signage proposed on the site, so you can kind of see some of the areas where it's labeled. I'll see if I can find a clearer plan. But there, so there'll be directional signage in this location saying that it's left turn only to exit the Starbucks. So there's a note on the plans there. And there will be a, a full kind of like signage and access plan will be provided as part of building permit for the site, and that's reviewed by our engineering department, planning, and our fire department as well. But yes, there will be several areas where directional signage will be needed and utilized for circulation on the property.
Thank you. That answers question number one. Number two, being a visitor to coffee shops and waiting in long lines, yes, they may have 15 here for that coffee shop, but if it then backs up into the main cobblestone, you know, main street of that parking lot, are there plans for that of obviously extending out from that drive-through as well? Or is that all part of the traffic plan that's going to be proposed?
So I can't so speak to the, what's been provided already as part of the traffic study that they have begun incorporating, but I can say that, that that is questions that we will want to review as well as part of that. And then that they are also providing, I thought your question was going one direction and that didn't, that they are providing an early exit from the, from the coffee shop drive-through lane in particular for somebody who may want to give up. But the...
And thank you. I did think of that, but I left that part out.
Yeah, left that part out, yeah. But yes, so site circulation is extremely important as part of the traffic review on the property. So that is information that we will be collecting as part of their kind of site signage plan when they're coming in for building permits showing. So there are kind of indicating in some areas where arrows may be painted or directional signage pointing out where that may be. We don't put a limitation on how many of those smaller directional signs that they put on the property, so they can put a number of them to increase safety on the site so that there aren't any of those jams or where they're causing problems for neighbors where our police department may have to get involved, things like that. So that is important, and we do look for that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions, commissioners? I'd like to point out one of our city engineers, Sarah Lloyd, is with us tonight. Commissioner Timmerman?
Okay, where do I start? Okay, so when the applicant comes up to speak, I'm going to ask him to give me a life and a day in the life of a vehicle traveling through this.
Why don't we invite the applicant up?
I want to ask just a couple other questions before I go towards them or ask questions for them, but the main question I have, and it's probably an engineering question, maybe a planning question, is our entire access to this site is basically a private road. And that private road is much narrower, narrower than Nicolet Boulevard coming into...
It's, it's on Nicolet.
Or sorry, Fairview Drive.
Oh, Fairview, okay. Yes, for Macross.
It's right, it's about half the width of what Fairview Drive is. And we have a large new grocery store going in that presumably may or may not need parking spaces, and so this property can pull maybe parking spaces from there or from Arby's. And so I guess the question that I have is what type of improvements are going to be made on this private road that's now feeding a significant increase in traffic to this property and then also further to the west presumably?
That is a great question. So this property owner does not have, they have egress and ingress rights to the road easement for the private drive aisle, but they are not owner of the portions which improvements could be made to? Does that make sense?
Makes sense. Do you know off the top of your head if improvements with the Mendel Project to the north of this are expanding that access?
As far as I'm aware, there is no widening going on as part of their changes that they are making to the site for their new tenant.
Any other questions, Commissioner Timmerman?
Well, I'm sure. I'll save them.
Not yet, okay. With that, I would like to invite the applicant to come up to the lectern, podium, I think it's a podium, to address some of the questions we do have. We do appreciate you coming in today.
Yes, someone close to.
Yeah.
My name is Mitchell Kukas with Kimley Horn. The address is 767 North Eustis Street, Suite 100 in St. Paul, 55114.
Thank you, sir.
We can, I think, field some of these questions collectively. I guess where would you like me to start with the questions?
Well, let's start with, well, let's start with, with the access road or actually, let's start with the signage that Commissioner Wallace pulled out, pushed out.
So if you can speak to the directional signage improvement?
Yeah, so it's very, very important, as we know, and there is some of the information included in the site plan as Sarah had mentioned, or Ms. Madden, excuse me. There will be a further signage plan developed, but in the interest of not only the city, but especially of the tenants and the owner as well, having clear signage, not only striping on the pavement as well as left turn only, do not enter, those sorts of signs is vital to these tenants' operation. They want to efficiently and safely move folks to get your coffee or your tacos or what have you in and out of there as quick as possible. So I think it's in everyone's best interest to have things safely and efficiently signed. So that will, there will be more signage plans to come with the next, the construction documents to come.
Sure. And as we, as we were speaking on the access road or, do you have any insight on that at all, or is that all your purview?
You know, I have some limited information. We, we just had the, so didn't give really any time for staff to, we sent over on Friday the, the traffic study, so I'm not going to pretend like either, either of the Saras here have had time to look at that. But based on the analysis that we did, there wasn't any, at this point, needs for improvements to Nicolet Avenue, to the roadways, based on the, of course, existing restaurant that was there, albeit this, the new uses have a higher demand. The level of service was going to remain the same, which is a level of service B. I don't, won't go into all the detail, but it's not an A, it's not a C, if you can kind of get the drift of that.
Somewhere in between. One question I had, and that's concerning the parking. I love, I would love to have this happen. It does feel like we're trying to stuff in two restaurants into one small site, and there's half the parking as required. And when people look back and they start yelling, who in the heck, who are they that allowed us to do this? Where the they? So we have, we should ask the questions. And how do you feel about the parking? Why, why such a reduced amount is going to be good enough? I do have concerns on that.
Definitely understand that. And it's, I guess I should mention too that previously, and we've been working with staff for quite a few months now and have appreciated the back and forth. We've had maybe a few more phone calls and emails than we had hoped, but we're making very good progress. At one point, the coffee shop was proposed to be a sit-down, full coffee shop. So the project, if you, if you didn't know, that was scaled back to this drive-through only because of this parking concern. So that's a very valid concern. So the project team, we've been working together along with the prospective tenants and the ownership group to reduce the size of that building, which in turn reduces the parking demand, but then also to have it go to a drive-through only gives a much better level of comfort to the prospective tenants on the ability to provide adequate parking. We've done some parking analysis, which involved going to some existing, and existing Taco John's and existing Starbucks, the little further down 42, as you probably know, in Burnsville here, to, to gather some data and analyze it a couple different ways without going through the entire detail, but within the packet, the parking and queuing memo was included, and that showed the midday peak. So basically, the most overlap, if you will, between the coffee shop and the restaurant is around that lunch hour, and it shows about a 31 parking stalls is the maximum peak demand. So we've got a little bit over that, a 15-ish percent, 12 to 15% buffer above that, which has given some added confidence in that, but we understand it's not, it's not ideal, you could say.
Commissioner Timmerman?
I like how you use percentages when that means four extra parking stalls. But what did you learn when you looked at the Starbucks on County Road 42 that currently exists?
Most of the cars come through the drive-through.
And what did you learn about the access or inability to access in that particular spot?
Chick-fil-A is crazy busy.
And so is Starbucks. And it creates significant traffic problems when Starbucks backs up or Chick-fil-A backs up and folks can't get in or out of either parking lot, which creates anger and frustration. And that's kind of why we sit here and try to think these things through to alleviate some of those problems. I do want to step back just a little bit, and if you would explain, literally show us how a car would route through this, whether they're going through to get their coffee pickup or they're going through to get their Taco John's pickup, how that traffic would flow?
Yeah, I'll, I'll describe it, because I don't have a plan, I can, I can wave my hand over here, but through the shared access, I'll also mention that the driveway there, you can see is 36 feet wide, so it's wider than your typical to provide on the westernmost point, you're essentially entering at the start of the coffee shop. So you would come in and if you're going through the coffee shop drive-through, make your way south down that drive-through lane, queue all the way southbound until you pick up your coffee. Thank you, Sarah. And then as you make your way out, you turn left into the north, you turn left right there thanks to left turn only signs and pavement markings, and then head north to go back to the shared driveway and make your way from there, more than likely to the east back towards Nicolet, but you could turn if for some reason you wanted to continue going west towards the, the rest of the cobblestone, cobblestone court. If you're coming for tacos or potato olays or whatever.
Wish I will be.
You would enter through that middle lane of the three on the northbound. If you've been there before, you could take a quick left and pull right into where that number nine is if you happen to, but more than likely, you will head south past the trash enclosure. If you're coming to the, the drive-through, you will turn left right there and then pick one of the two lanes depending on what's open and make your way through the drive-through heading north around the east side of the Taco John's and make your way continuing west and then turn north out of the shared driveway there. And if you were parking to come to either, maybe it's a mobile order, excuse me, mobile order pickup, you would park just on the north side of the coffee shop. That's next to the handicap stall there. There are four more dedicated type stalls for your mobile order pickups. And if you're coming to Taco John's, ideally, you get one of those stalls closest to the building, but if not, there are the parking stalls to the west of the building as well. And the intent with the compact stalls on the north end is those would primarily be for employees, so they're less, they're not taking up the more prime spots for either your mobile order pickup or for the Taco John's.
So what about foot traffic? Because presumably, we will have folks who work at Fairview and Park Nicolet and in our medical community walking across the street across Nicolet, which is a very busy street. And so the pedestrian traffic needs to be considered strongly in the traffic study. We talked a lot about this as far as pedestrians' safety when we looked at the grocery store just to the north of this. But talk about how pedestrians would come from the medical offices on the other side of Nicolet Avenue.
Yes, it's a, it's a really good point, and I've been to that hospital numerous times. I live in the area, so understand the amount of people coming to and from there. If you're on the east side of Nicolet... If you're on the east side of Nicolet and you cross westbound to get over to the site, the, the sidewalk that runs, I'll call it north-south primarily along the west side of Nicolet, would be the desired path to get to where we're showing the proposed sidewalk connection right there, which would then bring you inbound to the site where you can get to either, either location through the sidewalks as well as the crossings through the, the drive-through lanes there.
Okay, that makes sense. And remind me, how many total parking spaces, including the, the compact?
Thirty-five.
Okay.
Any other questions, commissioners? Commissioner Anderson?
I'm just kind of curious. It, it looks like, so for the walking area that you were just talking about, the idea is to go across where cars might be lined up to order. So are they going to be going like in between the cars or?
Ideally, well, this, I guess, the intent is that the people and the vehicles will be respectful and allow people to walk to and from. We know that that may not always happen. The vehicles shown here are at that basically maximum, right? So we're showing 12 cars in the Taco John's, 15 in the Starbucks. If there aren't, in this case, if there aren't that 11th or 12th car there at Taco John's, there's nobody in your way. If there are, ideally, the vehicles respect the pedestrians, which I think people want to do in general within the city.
Do we know, is there a sidewalk on the north part, like to south of the, the street to walk on in case you didn't want to go down Nicolet Avenue there?
On the north part of the, the shared drive there?
Yeah, yeah, the, the public driveway we were talking about before, north of the cobblestone entrance sign. Or would that be across the street for another sidewalk?
There, there is a, an existing sidewalk north of that shared drive. But there's not one on the south side. There's a little bit of a slope there, if you recall. It's, 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 the Taco John's building sits down a little bit. So there's, there's not currently, nor is there proposed a, a shared sidewalk on the, the south side of that shared drive.
Okay, just checking.
Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Timmerman?
Have you had communication with the landowners just to the north there?
Yes, the ownership team has, yes.
Okay. And how have those gone as far as shared access, shared parking?
Speak to that.
Good evening, Ned Ruckavina, 3500 American Boulevard, Bloomington, Minnesota. Yeah, we, we spoke to Schaefer Richardson, their new tenant, who's coming in, I think they're opening in March or February, March. They, you know, all their parking is called, or is spoken for, so they don't, they didn't have any parking to share with us. But they, you know, retail invites other retail. And so I can imagine someone might be going to the grocery store and say, well, let's go walk over and get a cup of coffee. Let's walk over and get a taco. And, you know, they're not towing anyone if that's the case. I mean, we're not, we're not encouraging or talking about having people go park over there because that wouldn't be too neighborly. But I think if, if someone, and that's kind of this mixed-use concept that is, is kind of happening in this community. And that's why we're trying to embrace the sidewalk with the, and invite people. Right now, the amount of time we've spent there, I haven't, and we've owned the property since April. And so, and we've been down there a lot, and I, I don't see anyone walking there right now. And, and maybe there's not a reason to. But there are Arby's is there, but I don't, I don't see anyone walking to Arby's. I don't see anyone walking to, and we're really trying to enhance the, the look and invite people to walk and, you know, and, and come down that sidewalk to access that. And I think the, and we have a sidewalk going up north by those compact spots that would access. And we haven't, we haven't talked to them about, you know, crosshatching or putting a, and I don't know what that would do to the traffic. Mitchell, but having some painting or whatever across that, that drive lane to create an access point from the shopping center.
Commissioner Wallace?
And one more question. You said you spoke to the business to the north. Did you also speak to Arby's? Since you can see where all their extra parking is right adjacent to the drive-through for Starbucks?
We've attempted to, but have not been able to reach them.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I just have a comment. I, if I may.
You may.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have concerns about the parking. I, I mean, I looked at the Taco John's in Savage, and it looks like they have 25 spaces, maybe. They're never full. This is not a coffee shop where people are going in to sit down, so I, I really am not terribly concerned about the parking. I'm, I'm just always conscientious about the foot traffic and the safety of the foot traffic. And I like how you have it coming south on Nicolet and then in between the two shops. It's just, is that how people will actually behave? I mean, that's what the traffic study looks at and, and all of that. But, you know, my biggest concerns are what happens if that Starbucks queue is longer than 15 cars. And also the concern about that shared access with the business to the north. So, I mean, obviously, with the shared access, that's not something you can mitigate. And that's why I just want to bring the concern that if the traffic study shows that this isn't feasible, especially because of that shared drive, I don't know that this project has the ability to overcome that. There's not the space to overcome that. So hopefully, everything works out. I, I love the project. I love the, the concept here. And maybe you can answer this, but when you were looking at the Starbucks on 42 to the west, what's the most number of cars that you ever saw in the drive-through lane?
I, you know, I, I was there a number of times with a couple of different of the clients and prospects and, you know, seven to 10. I've been doing coffee work, representing different coffee companies for, you know, almost 35 year, or 30, 30 years. And, you know, when we, when I started, you know, we, we talked about a six-car stack, and then it, it increased to a seven-car stack. And, and now, you know, we're trying to illustrate a maximum. We came forward with, you know, and, and working with staff and Sarah and her crew, and push that as far as we, and make it as long as we can. That's why we've pushed the building, the Starbucks building, as far to the south as we, we could and asked for that little variance to kind of cut that corner. But those are peak times that, you know, we're, we're, we're showing at that, that stack. And then the, the, the nature, you know, the nature of these businesses are, you know, and I, I agree with you. I mean, that's why, and we appreciate your comments about the parking. Because the, the studies are showing that, yeah, the, 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 the traffic is, you know, above 80% is going to, will be coming through the drive-through. And Taco, Taco Bell just is, they have a site under construction that's drive-through only. Shake Shack is opening something in Maple Grove with the same kind of thing, a drive-through only. So that's kind of a, I don't think, I think it's a trend that's going to stay.
So my, my biggest concern with the traffic is I've been in locations, parking rather, is I've been in locations that are designed a lot like this. Lunchtime, that all the parking spots are full. You actually have people driving around looking for an open parking spot. So that's where my nerves get a little bit unhinged, not unhinged, but I, I feel a little bit nervous about the area, especially if traffic, foot traffic, et cetera. Well, one of, we have city engineer here, Ms. Lloyd. Can you give us a little bit more perspective on what you have seen?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add on to the queuing question. I'm actually looking at Kimley Horn's report here. Their traffic queue for the coffee shop had an average queue from in the morning at, at six vehicles and in the midday, just over seven, with a maximum queue of 11:00 in the morning and 12:30 in the midday. So that, they do meet the queue there for those maximum numbers, which is, which is reassuring, good to see.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Do you have any comments concerning traffic into the whole cobblestone, cobblestone court area?
That is something that, that that traffic study will show, because we do have kind of some questions about how that western leg of that intersection will, will work here in the future with the additional traffic that is coming in. So, yeah, we'll, we'll look at that study further just to help understand how that'll function.
Okay. And it looks like someone else was going to speak from the applicant's side?
Good evening. My name is Mark Finelli, and I, I live at 2401 West 52nd Street in Minneapolis. I'm one of the owners. So I have the same concerns you did. And what I can tell you is that, what I learned is, because I have another Starbucks in St. Paul on Grand Avenue, but it doesn't have a drive-through. Of course, there's always been issues with that urban infill location. So when we talked to the, the prospective tenants, one of which is here, the representative is here, Starbucks, we asked them, you know, what will you live with if we are forced to, you know, make available to you a certain amount of queuing? And if we have to reduce the size of your, your, your facility to accommodate the parking ratios? And they told us that they've got this down in which the queuing timing is such that their car number seven on this, on this image has to be at the order board, not car number six, not car number eight. It, it has to be car number seven because they've timed it and they have a sequence to move that line. And, and so when they heard or saw that we could put 15 cars in that line, and by the way, there's two things to point out that you might find helpful. So what they do is they create a pullover lane, too. So if a car's order is inordinately delayed, they can pull up to that wide piece of the dry exit lane, and then someone will run it out to them, and the other cars can keep moving. So in my mind, that meant they can keep their, their, their model going, their circulation. So the other thing that we did is we wanted to ask that the architect and engineer widen the throat of that opening just in case the back end is coming out, so that it doesn't compromise the ingress egress of the cars coming to the center that might be going to Taco John's. So for what it's worth, maybe another car could be, it could be pulling in while those two can still ingress egress. So I thought those were two really important pieces. Of course, the, the exit hatch there in case something gets bottlenecked at car number eight forward, all those other cars can exit, park if they need to, or leave, whatever they choose to do. So the point is, we thought of a lot of things to keep that operational queuing and movement going, and then exceeded that by, by our ability to get more cars in there. So hopefully, that helps you understand what we thought about when we, when, when we knew, when we had the concern as well about circulation.
I really appreciate you calming our fears a little bit. And that's why we had the discussion. We want to ensure that everything goes in through smoothly and that this is the best thing for Burnsville, obviously. Before I add more voices to this conversation, any other questions from the commission to city staff, or the applicants, or any of those lines? Okay, well, I'm going to open this up to our public. There's a public hearing. It's 8:14. The public hearing is open. I apologize, there was somebody on Zoom before, and just want to recognize that, yeah, we do see you. I apologize. I missed that text message saying there's somebody there. I believe we have a couple of people on Zoom. I don't know if they want to speak to this issue. If they do, they can please chat with the moderator, letting them know, and we will open them up on, on the line. Otherwise, if you are watching from at home, you can call us. We're at 651-372-8299, meeting ID. It's 989-4587-9774. Or if you're on your audience, you can please step up to the podium and let us know. And I'll give a little bit of time for anybody that would like to speak to this issue.
No Zoom updates.
So it does sound like no one is going to, else is going to speak to this issue, and I will close the public hearing at 8:16. And then I'm going to turn back to the commission for conversations, comments, resolutions, et cetera. Commissioners? Commissioner Anderson?
First and foremost, I'd like to say thank you, sir, for this presentation. You can tell a lot of work went into this. I, I really like the idea of what's being proposed here. I think they're doing a good job of getting as much bang for your buck out of the, the site that they can do. I'm also glad that the entrances on the north, because the, if I got to the south, I'm not a fan of that intersection there at all. So any traffic that gets pushed away from it is a good thing to me. But overall, I'm a big fan of this idea. I think it sounds like a, a good, good thing for Burnsville as well as, you know, with the new construction going to the north of that area. So I think it'll be good.
Anyone else? Commissioner Anderson?
Well, if nobody else has a comment, I would like to recommend, or have the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the planned unit development amendment for two buildings on one lot, subject to the following seven conditions.
There is a motion on the floor by Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Awad, you had something?
I will second the motion.
Good second by Commissioner Awad. Before we go to a vote, I want to give my appreciation to this applicant. Thank you for answering our questions and being available to us. It's not always easy to come up to a city meeting and, and speak in front of everybody, so appreciate you taking the time to do that. With that, I am going to move to a, a vote. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, say nay. That is a five to zero win. So that will be on the consent agenda for December 21st city council meeting. That will be 5:30 here at the city hall in these chambers. And that brings us to number seven on our agenda. It's a long agenda day. And that's our work plan for 2022 as we round out the year. And I'm giving that to you again, Ms. Madden.
Who would have thought? So, consistent with city policy, every year, the planning commission and other city commissions put together a work plan for items, study, things to do. Some of our commissioners are new and so haven't been a part of this in previous years. Normally, when we're putting together a work plan, it's an opportunity for commission members and for staff to say, here's something that we've seen come up a lot this year. Lots of people want larger garages, or we want to look at this particular roofing material because we've seen a lot of requests for that. Let's put some time aside next year for a staff-initiated discussion or study into what other cities are doing about this, or let's change this small item, things like that in the zoning code. We're doing a full city code update, which you guys have been helping with. It, when we talked about this last winter, we said that we would be done by the first quarter of 2022. You'll see in your drafted work plan for next year. I've put that for first quarter of 2023. I attended a session for the Minnesota or the Midwest branch of the American Planning Association last fall, where they said if you're going to do a full city code update, it was, it was about zoning code update, triple the amount of time that you think it's going to take. And I told Regina that. Here we are. So, no, we're, we're still working through that. No, we're, we're still working through that. We're hoping to get some new drafts to you soon. We've been working really hard at some of our commercial industrial chapters and really trying to push our consultants kind of to the limit of this is what we want to get done and hopefully we can all work together to get it done. But, so we should have some new drafts for you and for other commissions that we send these ordinances out to review shortly. But for the work plan, because of the situation that we're in, where most of our normal special studies are zoning related, we're not requesting or suggesting any new special studies for the twenty twenty-two work plan. But as far as our twenty twenty-one accomplishments go, so there have been quite a few things that have changed in the last year that has come for the planning commission. So related to the twenty forty comprehensive plan update, the land use changes for all of the mixed-use areas were approved by the Metropolitan Council. We did a text amendment to the comprehensive plan that increased our residential density standards or abilities in most of our high-density residential and medium-density zoning districts and as well as mixed-use and transit-oriented development. Related to the County Road Forty-two study or the vision, there's been a kind of movement on the traffic study that was approved by the city council to further implement the Center Village vision. Staff has been working and you were able to see earlier this fall an application for a plat of the Burnsville Center property, which staff had nothing to do with. But you, you know, we're seeing something happen in that area and we're excited that the new property owner has been keeping us up to date with what their intentions are with the site and, and things going forward. Something that you may hear about too soon is some of the grants that the city has been applying for related to transportation updates, both in the city as a whole, but particularly in the Center Village area. There should be some news that you'll see coming out about that pretty soon. If you haven't heard it already, I don't think the official press release is out yet. But, you know, there's movement happening in these areas, maybe not in the zoning area, but for city initiatives across the board, you know, things are happening and, or happened in twenty twenty-one. We are still working with the lower Minnesota watershed district. That's that third item that was on the work plan. This has been kind of a placeholder in the work plan for the last two or three years as that watershed district updated their plans to standards that are more strict than Burnsville city code. So currently they are enforcing their new plan. We send them preliminary plans when we get development or building permits that are in their area. And then applicants are now doing a separate permitting process outside of the city's process with the watershed district. And the goal is sometime in the next year or two that we do include their more strict provisions into our zoning ordinance, but we're still working out how that's going to come into play as they, it would be the city enforcing rules that are more strict than what we currently require for things like grading permits, impervious surface, things like that in the lower Min watershed district. And then as I mentioned, city code updates, we've made progress so far with our residential zoning districts. Commercial, industrial and mixed-use is the next batch that you should be getting probably early in the next year. And we hope to be able to start holding some public hearings for the residential portion, also in the first quarter of twenty twenty-two. So that's kind of my update on what we have accomplished from the twenty twenty-one work plan. In your packet, I have drafted an identical twenty twenty-two work plan with the caveat that I have changed the estimated completion date for the zoning code update to the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. I'd also like to note that training is still a high priority for things that we'd like to do with the planning commission. Staff has kind of a intent to keep providing you with information and hoping that you'll attend these different events. We are actually very fortunate to be hosting the Urban Plan Workshop this Friday. I believe that most, if not all of you are attending that. That's a big deal. This is something that Jenny Faulkner, our community development director, actually worked to get you all to come to city hall to do this with us. This isn't something that just anybody signs up to do. This is a full-blown with roles workshop that we would be completing on Friday. So definitely a, a new look to typical training that we've done. There's also going to be a land use one-on-one training again in February at the city council work session with our planning consultant, Stan Tech. So we did this with John Shardlow maybe two years ago, down in one of the basement in one of the conference rooms. This one will be at a city council work session. So it'll be much more open to the public, a full land use training. We're hoping to get into some land use law topics at that training. So we're hoping to kind of continue to provide those opportunities, whether they're fun ones or whether they're more hard educational ones. We're, we're trying to keep, make sure that we're still providing those opportunities to you guys. What I need from you this evening, this is not something where we need a recommendation or a vote. That would come in spring before we present the final work plan to the city council. But just discussion items, is there something that you would like to propose for the work plan? I would love to hear it. Or if you just have any feedback, questions, anything related to the city code update. I know we haven't talked about it in a while. It's been a little bit since our consultant came in to do discussion at a planning commission meeting. So if you need any information from me, if there's something we could be doing differently about that process, let me know and we can incorporate that into our feedback.
Well, commissioners, before, I, I want to say thank you, everyone, for your work in twenty twenty-one thus far. It has been a great year and, you know, you see these buildings going up and they're all buildings that, you know, came before us at some point and it really is rewarding to see, see action happening behind some of the things we do and, and what we see. So thank you for all your dedicated work this year. And going into the future with that, as we discuss the twenty twenty-two work plan, any discussion, ideas, thoughts on what we could do better than we did in twenty twenty-one? Commissioner Anderson.
Is first quarter twenty twenty-three enough time?
Fair question.
If you took away all of my projects, this is the only thing that I worked on.
Regina, listen.
Maybe she's on our Zoom, we don't know.
I hope so. We're moving forward. We have a lot of ordinances that we have been drafting, but they are not. We're trying to, the mission that we've gotten from the city council has been to kind of be bold with this, be, make big changes. We're trying to implement that and that does take time for us to go through and making sure that not only are we making changes that we can see fitting the built environment that we have in Burnsville, but that also complies with our comprehensive plan. And so, and these meetings that we're having internally, we're flipping through the comp plan while we're looking at these red lines that we're creating. We want to make sure that what we're bringing to you is something that we're standing behind, as with everything that we bring to the planning commission. I hope that it's enough time.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Denverman.
I think what staff has done in this last year has been amazing. I mean, the, just the world in which we live is, has been fairly chaotic and we come to these meetings every two weeks and you guys just keep giving us really geeky, fun. I mean, you're talking about in-depth legal training and, I mean, I'm just so excited for all of that. I think that's wonderful that you want to keep us engaged and educated in the decisions that we make. I think what you've proposed for next year is great. I don't have any additions.
I will second that. I really enjoyed some of the things we've done thus far. I'm really excited about Friday, believe it or not. I think it will be fun, I really do. One thing, one thing that I've, I've always wondered is when we do some of these site visits, could they be coordinated with the applicants at all? There, there are times when it would be really nice when we can see the sites and there's a few places in particular that are, are more restricted than others. I'm thinking like the Kramer Land, the quarry or the, we talk about down, I'm trying to think, it's a public utility down off of, behind the Pepsi plant there. To be able to see the sites, view them, they have restricted access, et cetera, so. And I don't know as far as quorum, et cetera, where that falls, but it would be nice to be able to do some of those things, you know, as time permits. And I know it adds a little bit to our schedules, but personally, I like to see the sites before, you know, we discuss them to kind of get a better visual of what happens.
It's a good idea.
Yeah. Any other thoughts, questions, discussions? All right, well, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. That's the end of our presentation this evening then.
Well, let's move into updates. Commissioners, any updates for planning commission? One thing I have is usually at the end of the year, we like to get together, go to a restaurant or something along those lines. I know we need to acknowledge that for quorum issues or seat planning, et cetera.
Actually, we have posted that and taken care of the publishing so that you can go this evening after the meeting over at Morgan's.
Best.
Perfect, that's awesome.
Oh, it's tonight?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm available, Commissioner Awad.
If you want to go another time, let us know and we can do that too.
Thank you.
But you are, I mean, everything is published, so.
Okay, everything's legal.
Yeah.
T's crossed, I's dotted.
Certainly can.
All right.
We won't be talking about any city business.
Yeah, believe us.
That's probably the language you put on there, so we will not.
Yeah, you can only talk about Spider-Man and the new movies coming out. That's it. That's all we published for.
Here's the subject of conversation we discussed.
That's all I'm going to be talking about tonight, so.
Any updates for us?
Yes, so for, at the last regular city council meeting, the adoption of the resolution, final resolution for the Center Village Comp Plan Amendment for the areas north of County Road Forty-two. So that would be between McAndrews and Forty-two and then five is the boundary. So the land use has been changed to mixed-use. So that final adoption did go through and that public hearing was more than a year ago. There was some work that had to be done with the A U A R and the environmental review first before the Metropolitan Council would review that comprehensive plan amendment. So now that they have approved it, the city council has adopted it and you will be seeing the rezoning of those sites sometime in the spring. And that's my main update, I believe.
MBTA was approved by council, it was on the consent agenda, so that project's approved. They did have a sketch plan that was presented to them for a Chipotle restaurant down in heart of the city. That didn't go so well.
Oh, really?
I think primarily because the location was right in front of the new apartment building that's being constructed there. And that, that location was right over very large utilities and is also kind of the area that would be used once the apartment is done. There is also some retail in that building and that's kind of their, where it makes sense for their parking. And the owner from Cub has had some, had some issues and been towing vehicles and whatnot and council advised that they really needed to play nicely together and suggested that they do so. So we'll see. There would be an opportunity if they would want to come, you know, come back and locate it further to the east to avoid the, the issues with utilities. And still kind of a interesting thing when the city gets sued for not providing enough parking and then they want to come in and take up more parking. So it was, it was an interesting evening. If you, if you care to, take, take a look at the council meeting and, and it was interesting, but that's it.
Okay. And our next meeting will be in January?
It will be January tenth.
Okay.
Will be your first one of the new year. And I actually have one final update that I had forgotten about, I apologize. So something that planning and economic development staff have been working with, the Economic Development Commission on, is the creation of a new home improvement loan policy. So that will be at work session tomorrow evening, if you wanted to tune into that. So the city is proposing that there are three new housing programs that are established for planning and economic development departments to coordinate through. So one would be a home improvement loan, kind of open in general to owner-occupied properties. There are some income restrictions. And, and then the other would be a deferred home improvement loan for seniors sixty-five and up. And then the other program would be a code enforcement. We're calling it Code Cash, so that, that would be more of a direct cash. That would be like a grant of small amounts. So if you were to watch the November Economic Development Commission meeting, you could get a kind of an overview on that presentation on what the programs would really look like before tomorrow evening. But generally, these are part of the goals of the Economic Development Strategic Plan. Their goal number four was related to housing policies and programs. And so the city has been utilizing, as all of the kind of Dakota County cities do, the Dakota County C D A. And with this new plan, this will be kind of a new city initiative for South of the River for us to have our own housing programs that we implement. So, and that's final update.
Great. Well, thank you, everybody.
Want to comment on that?
Commissioner Denverman.
That's awesome. I just want to say that in addition to watching the November Economic Development, John Gessner in the local paper wrote a great write-up on that, just kind of unpacking all of the information. And that was two Fridays ago in that, in that local paper. Really fantastic program, so I'm excited to learn more about that.
And we're at number eight on our agenda, which is adjournment. So if anybody wanted to make a, Commissioner Awad.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Good deal. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bradock.
I second the motion.
Good. A motion made by Commissioner Awad, seconded by Commissioner Bradock. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? No one oppose? Thank you for joining us tonight.